Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for this virtual public hearing. My name is Wendy Lowe, and I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing on behalf of the U.S. Department of Energy's Office of Nuclear Energy. In compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act, the Department of Energy has published a draft environmental impact statement which analyzes the impacts of DOE's proposed action to acquire high-assay low-enriched uranium, or HALU, for commercial use and demonstration projects, and to facilitate the domestic commercialization of HALU production. Before we get too far along, I'd like to introduce Catherine Willett. She and her colleague Billy Sanders are providing American Sign Language interpretation for us for this meeting. The goals of this public hearing are to explain the process used, to analyze the proposed action and alternatives, and to provide you with an opportunity to submit oral comments on the draft environmental impact statement. In the first portion of the meeting, DOE's program manager for the HALU program will tell you about the draft EIS. During the second portion, you will be invited to provide oral comments. Both oral and written comments submitted throughout the 45-day public comment period will be considered by the Department of Energy. Comments received during this time will help DOE refine its analysis, identify new information, and consider additional alternatives during the development of the final environmental impact statement. Today is Wednesday, April 3, 2024, and the time is now 6:02 PM Eastern. This virtual public hearing is one of three that are being held this evening. The second hearing will begin at 8:00 PM Eastern, and the third will begin at 10:00 PM Eastern. Please be aware that all three hearings are being recorded. The recordings for all three virtual hearings will be combined into one file and uploaded to the project website within two weeks of this hearing. The information portion of this public hearing will begin shortly with a presentation by the Department of Energy's program manager, Michael Reim. His presentation was pre-recorded to make sure that the information presented is consistent for all three sessions this evening. The presentation will last approximately 10 minutes and will provide background information on the National Environmental Policy Act and about the proposed action. For those who are calling in on an audio-only device, I would invite you to go to the project website so that you can see an uploaded version of the presentation slides. The project website is located at This link will be provided in the chat for those of you who are participating online with Zoom. Following the presentation, I will explain the procedures we will be using for taking comments.
Hello and welcome to this public hearing. I'm Michael Reim, program manager for the U.S. Department of Energy, Office of Nuclear Energy. And today we'll be talking about the draft environmental impact statement for DOE activities in support of commercial production of high-assay low-enriched uranium, also known as HALU. First, I'd like to give a presentation overview, beginning with the National Environmental Policy Act overview. This will include the purpose of an environmental impact statement, or EIS, comments received during the scoping period, the purpose of public hearings in general. Additionally, I'll be discussing the project background. This includes the purpose and need, a proposed action and alternatives, scope of activities, approach to the impact analysis, the impact analysis categories, and a summary of potential impacts. First, we'll begin with the National Environmental Policy Act. NEPA is a federal law that requires federal agencies to identify and consider the environmental consequences of implementing projects. An EIS is prepared for proposed actions likely to have significant effects. An EIS also analyzes the effects of a proposed action and is prepared before actions are taken that could limit the selection of an alternative or result in adverse environmental effects. The AIS process incorporates public input, which is why we're here today, and informs the public in decision-making process, which is the purpose of this presentation. Additionally, the purpose of an environmental impact statement is to identify the purpose and need for the proposed action, to identify alternatives. This includes a reasonable range of alternatives that meet the purpose and need, including the preferred alternative. This also includes a no-action alternative. It also describes the existing environment at candidate sites or areas to be affected by the alternative. It evaluates the environmental consequences of the alternatives using the best available information. It identifies mitigation measures, and it evaluates direct, indirect, and cumulative impacts. The scoping period for the HALU EIS took place from June 5, 2023, until July 20, 2023. 409 individual comments were identified. DOE reviewed each comment document, characterized the comments, and found the public wanted several topics to be covered in the draft EIS. This list includes accidents in human health, alternatives, climate change, conversion, cost analysis, deconversion, environmental justice and justice 40, enrichment, environmental impacts, fuel fabrication, NEPA in general, nonproliferation, nuclear waste management, opposition to the project, out-of-scope comments, purpose and need for reactor technologies, regulatory concerns, spent fuel management, storage, support activities, transportation, and tribal consultation. In response to the comments received, DOE expanded discussions about how project locations would be chosen in the Reader's Guide in Section 1.0 of Volume 1, and added a nonproliferation section in Section 3.9 of Volume 1. Other topics raised were either already identified in the NOI and covered in the draft EIS or were deemed out of scope for the EIS. Next, I'll discuss the purpose of public hearings and the goals of public hearings. The purpose is to provide the public a forum to learn more about the draft HALU EIS and its proposed action, as well as to solicit public comments prior to the final EIS. The goals of the public hearings are threefold: to inform the public about potential environmental impacts of the proposed action and alternatives; secondly, to seek feedback from stakeholders, including federal, state, tribal, local agencies, NGOs, and the public on the draft EIS; and finally, to provide opportunities for stakeholders and other interested parties to make formal comments on the draft EIS. Next, I'll discuss the project background for HALU. One aspect of a clean energy future is the sustainment and expanded development of safe and affordable nuclear power. And one key element of that goal is the availability of fuel to power those reactors. HALU is a crucial material required by most U.S. advanced reactors. Most designs require HALU in order to achieve smaller designs, longer operating cycles, and increased efficiencies over current nuclear energy technologies. However, there are currently limited options for acquiring HALU. HALU is not currently available from domestic suppliers, and gaps in supply could delay the deployment of advanced reactors in a timeframe that supports the nation's net-zero emissions targets by 2050. Currently, commercial nuclear fuel suppliers can't produce HALU, largely due to market uncertainties and infrastructure gaps. This poses a concern for the development, demonstration, and deployment of many advanced nuclear technologies. To accommodate these gaps and help meet the nation's net-zero emissions targets, the Energy Act of 2020 directs the Secretary of Energy to establish and carry out, through the Office of Nuclear Energy, a program to support the availability of HALU for civilian domestic research, development, demonstration, and commercial use. Further, Section 3131 of the recently enacted National Defense Authorization Act for fiscal year 2024, among other things, seeks to expeditiously increase domestic production of HALU to meet the needs of advanced nuclear reactor developers and the consortium established under Section 2001(a) of the Energy Act of 2020. The proposed action is to acquire, through procurement from commercial sources, HALU enriched to at least 19.75 in less than 20 weight percent uranium-235 over a 10-year period of performance, and to facilitate the establishment of commercial HALU fuel production. Given the variety of HALU applications, the initial capability is intended to be flexible and to be able to accommodate a number of items: enrichments of U-235 to greater than 5 and less than 20 weight percent, production of up to 290 metric tons of HALU at multiple enrichment facilities, modular HALU fuel cycle design concepts, and to accommodate future growth, deconversion of UF6 to forms suitable for production of a variety of fuels and to include oxides and metal. Under the no-action alternative, DOE would not acquire through procurement from commercial sources up to 290 metric tons of HALU or facilitate the establishment of commercial HALU fuel production. The EIS addresses six activities associated with the acquisition of 290 metric tons of HALU: extraction and recovery of uranium ore processed to yellowcake, conversion of the yellowcake into UF6, enrichment, including enrichment to no more than 5 weight percent, enrichment greater than 5 and less than 10 weight percent, and enrichment from 10 to less than 20 percent U-235 in an NRC Category 2 facility. It also includes deconversion of UF6 to uranium oxide, metal, and potentially other forms in a Category 2 facility, storage in a Category 2 facility, and transportation of uranium and HALU between facilities. In addition to the previous activities, the EIS discusses three reasonably foreseeable activities that could result in the implementation of the proposed action. This includes fuel fabrication for a variety of fuels, reactor operation, including demonstration, tests, power and isotope production, and spent fuel storage and disposition. While not specifically a part of the proposed action, the impacts from these reasonably foreseeable activities are acknowledged and addressed to the extent practicable. One contributing factor to the significance of environmental impacts is where facilities are located. However, locations will not be chosen as part of the record of decision for this EIS as potential HALU fuel cycle facilities are subject to an ongoing procurement process, including responses to requests for proposals. To determine the potential environmental consequences without site-specific information, DOE evaluated existing NEPA documentation for uranium fuel cycle facilities used in the low-enriched uranium fuel cycle, as well as available HALU fuel cycle NEPA reviews. The activities described in the proposed action are not unique. Extensive NEPA evaluation documentation exists for environmental consequences of similar activities. Since the proposed action is to acquire HALU from commercial sources, those commercial sources could propose a range of location scenarios for producing HALU. Scenarios could include the use of existing uranium fuel cycle facilities with modifications or expansions. It could include construction and operation of a new facility at an existing industrial site or brownfield site. And it also could include the construction and operation of a new facility at a previously undisturbed site or greenfield site. To estimate potential impacts associated with the proposed action, this EIS's subject matter experts leveraged the extensive existing NEPA documentation's impact assessments and determined relative impacts associated with performing these activities at existing facilities, brownfield sites, or greenfield sites using the NRC's impact assessment categories. Potential modification, construction, and operation of HALU fuel cycle facilities would be subject to U.S. Nuclear Regulatory Commission and other federal agency or agreement state licensing, including NEPA review and potentially other federal and state permitting. This EIS adopts the NRC impact assessment categories from the NEPA documents that were used as the basis for the impact analysis. Small impacts are not detectable or are so minor that they neither destabilize nor noticeably alter any important attribute of the resource. Moderate impacts are sufficient to alter noticeably but not destabilize important attributes of the resource. And large impacts are clearly noticeable and are sufficient to destabilize important attributes of the resource. This slide summarizes the impacts of siting a HALU facility at the three location scenarios analyzed in this EIS. For existing uranium fuel cycle facilities, most impacts would be small. The greatest potential for large impact is associated with mining and milling, and impact levels are mine-specific. For other industrial sites or brownfield sites, impacts are generally arranged from small to moderate, with potentially large impacts in areas associated with site demographics and historic, cultural, and ecological resources. For previously undeveloped or greenfield sites, this is similar to locating at brownfield sites with potentially larger impacts than brownfield due to increased unknowns about site characteristics, predominantly pertaining to historic, cultural, and ecological resources. This concludes the end of the presentation portion of the meeting, and I'd like to thank you again for your participation in the EIS process.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reim. That concludes the information portion of this virtual hearing. Next, we will begin accepting oral comments on the draft environmental impact statement. As the moderator, it is my job to make sure that this hearing is conducted in a respectful manner and to ensure that we provide a fair opportunity to provide oral comments. Michael Reim will be listening to the comments on behalf of the U.S. Department of Energy, but please understand that he and other DOE representatives are here to listen. They will not be responding to any comments during this hearing. A court reporter is also present off-screen to transcribe each comment during this hearing. Please try to speak clearly into your microphone to help ensure that the court reporter can accurately record your comments. I'd like to emphasize that providing oral comments during this virtual public hearing is only one of the ways that you can participate in the EIS process. You may also submit written comments by sending them via U.S. mail or by email. Written comments on the draft EIS should be sent to Mr. James Lovejoy, the DOE EIS document manager, by mail to U.S. Department of Energy's Idaho Operations Office, located at 1955 Fremont Avenue, Mail Stop 1235, in Idaho Falls, Idaho, 83415. If you prefer, you can send comments by email to HALU, H-A-L-E-U, E-I-S, at nuclear.energy.gov. Those same addresses may be used to request to be added to the mailing list for project notifications. DOE will consider all comments received or postmarked by the end of the public comment period, which will end on April 22, 2024. All comments will be given equal consideration regardless of whether they are submitted orally or in writing. The comments received throughout the comment period will be compiled and incorporated into a comment-response document. The comment-response document will include DOE's responses to comments that have been received and will be included in the final EIS. The opportunity to provide comments on the draft EIS began with the publication of the Notice of Availability on March 8, 2024. The Notice of Availability included information about how commenters could preregister to provide oral comments during this session. As we begin the oral comment portion of this hearing, we have 34 people who have already registered to speak, and we will begin by taking their comments first. If you're interested in providing comments during this public hearing but you didn't register ahead of time, we will do our best to accommodate you as well. You can let us know that you're interested in commenting by using the Raise Hand function in Zoom. Zoom keeps track of people who raise their hands in order, and we will call on you in a first-come, first-served basis. Time permitting, we will allow those with raised hands to provide oral comments after hearing from the preregistered attendees. If you're calling in by telephone, you may also raise your hand by dialing *9. To allow a fair opportunity to speak to as many people as possible, oral comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. To help you keep a track of time, a digital countdown clock will be provided on screen. This session is scheduled to go to 7:45 PM. If there's any time remaining before we're scheduled to end the session, we may provide an opportunity for anyone who has already spoken to have a second opportunity to provide comments. In addition, if we have just a few people left to call on, we will go as late as 7:55 PM. I will call the names of two people to speak at a time to give you a bit of notice when it's almost your turn to speak. When I call on you to provide your comments, our technical support team will unmute your microphone. Please begin by stating your name and the name of any organization that you're representing in an official capacity tonight. Your three minutes will begin at that point. Regardless of whether you registered to speak ahead of time or if you have raised your hand to speak, if you change your mind about speaking, please let us know while you are unmuted so that we can move on to the next person in the queue. We recognize that three minutes is a brief amount of time, and we encourage you to provide more detailed comments in writing to ensure that all of your thoughts, concerns, and suggestions on the draft EIS can be fully captured in the record. I will let you know when you have run out of time. If you are still speaking once your three minutes are up, I will ask you to conclude your remarks, and then I will call upon the next speaker. Please understand that if I do have to cut you off, it is to ensure that we can hear from as many people as possible, and then everyone who wants to speak during this public hearing has a fair opportunity to do so. We will accommodate as many people as we can in this session. One final request that I'd make of you tonight. I know that some of you may have strong opinions about DOE's proposal. We hope that everyone will share their opinions in a respectful manner. One of the main purposes of a public hearing is to give each of you an opportunity to provide your thoughts to DOE about the draft environmental impact statement. We're grateful that you've taken time out of your busy schedules to participate in this virtual public hearing. With that, we will begin taking comments. The first person on our list tonight is Abraham Brown, and Abraham will be followed by Anne Frisch. Is Abraham Brown with us? Okay. Anne Frisch will be followed by Arianna Northbird.
I did not sign up to give a comment at this time.
Ms. Dr. Frisch. Arianna Northbird will be followed by Chloe Nelson. Well, Chloe Nelson will be followed by Connie Klein. Connie Klein will be followed by Darrell Gale.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, Connie, I can hear you.
I did not sign up to comment at this time either.
Okay. Thank you for letting us know. Darrell Gale will be followed by David McDangle. Oh, I just said that wrong. Magdangle? David McDangle will be followed by Debbie Rowan. Debbie Rowan will be followed by Eugene Rosalie. Eugene Rosalie will be followed by Greg Schultz. Greg Schultz will be followed by Jane Van Prague. Jane Van Prague followed by Janet Schluter. Hope I pronounced that right. Janet. Did I say Janet? Okay. Hey, Janet Schluter will be followed by Jeff Sims.
Jeff Sims will be followed by Jennifer Thompson. Hi, this is Jennifer Thompson. I did not sign up to provide any comments today.
Thank you for letting us know. Jessie Dear followed by Kelly McGrath.
Good day. Jessie Dear in Water?
Oh, okay. Thank you, Jessie Dear in Water. You may go ahead.
All right. Good day. My name is Jessie Dear in Water. I'm a member of Citizens Resistance at Fermi 2 Craft, located in southeastern Michigan. I'm just calling in today because this Department of Energy proposal for HALU is essentially creating a whole new, vastly more dangerous nuclear fuel chain for nuclear power and weapons than we now have, which is already a radioactive waste issue. It has been acknowledged by, you know, many folks. But anyway, it will be hard to predict the environmental impacts of a whole new, more challenging fuel chain when, like I said, the current one has not really been fully evaluated and/or cleaned up. This environmental impact statement is a good thing, but it must be truly programmatic, a comprehensive, detailed analysis to cover an entirely new nuclear fuel chain. These proposed nuclear reactors have not been licensed or built. The radioactive intensity of this HALU fuel is dangerously close to bomb grade. I'm sure a lot of this has been brought up. I seen some of the the presentation. One thing that is really concerning is the 290 tons of fuel to be created, and there's not any reactors online yet. The EIS should consider multiple additive, cumulative, and synergistic health impacts, contamination of clean and further contaminated and already contaminated environments, impacts on water, air, plants, animals, socioeconomics, and environmental justice. It should also take into consideration the people who spend more time on the land, like foragers, hunters, indigenous communities, people who boat and hang out on waterways, you know. We're at a pivotal time where we can pursue the world with clean, safe, renewable energy instead of plunging deeper into even worse nuclear power waste and contamination issues. Yeah, that's all I kind of would like to add for now. Yeah, it just doesn't feel safe or prudent to enrich more fuel or to enrich fuel to higher levels. We already have some experimental fuels that are local reactor that were the GNF-3 fuel, which is a higher-enriched fuel that's unstable and can't leave, and so we're concerned about higher fuels. and so we're concerned about higher fuels, or higher enriched fuels. That's all, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Dear and Water. Next up is Kelly McGrath, who will be followed by Kelsey Shank. Kelly Shank will be followed by Laura Bailey. Laura Bailey will be followed by Lee Blackburn.
Yes, this is Laura Bailey. I did not sign up to give a comment, thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. Lee Blackburn will be followed by Luis Scriba. Or Louis Scriba?
Good evening, my name is Lee Blackburn. I am with the Ohio Nuclear Free Network. In April 2019, enriched uranium was found inside Zons Corner Middle School, four miles northeast of the former Portsmouth Gases Diffusion Plant. The Portsmouth nuclear site is home to the American Centrifuge Plant, or ACP, where HALU is currently being produced. The discovery of enriched uranium inside Zons Corner Middle School led to its closure, with DOE's response being a disgraceful 16-page report that cited just two references and fully contradicted a later, more extensive study by the Agency for Toxic Substances and Disease Registry, or ATSDR. The DOE report said only naturally occurring radionuclides were found in any of the samples, saying none of the samples indicated any excess radiological risk above background to the public. Yet the ATSDR study said the average annual net concentration of all variants of uranium from an air monitor directly across from Zons Corner Middle School were all above background levels for the entire five-year period from 2016 to 2020. I mentioned this as an example of why DOE can't be trusted. More importantly, however, is the harm being done to the inhabitants of southern Ohio by the off-site release of enriched uranium. For instance, in August 2022, Joseph Magano, Executive Director of the Radiation and Public Health Project, released an epidemiological study which found that Pike County's cancer rates in 2010 to 2019 was the highest among all 88 counties in Ohio. In addition, in 2009 to 2020, the cancer death rate was some 50% higher than the US for all age groups except for persons over 75. Pike County is home to the ACP. In addition, the Department of Labor has paid out some $1.3 billion in medical and compensation to former Portsmouth Gases Diffusion Plant workers and their families. Finally, simultaneously with the first production of HALU at the ACP in October 2023, independently owned air monitors near the facility registered higher than typical levels of enriched uranium. So if DOE truly intends to be protective of the environment and public safety, you need to seriously rethink the issues of public and occupational health under all operations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blackburn. Louis Scriba will be followed by Madison Schroder. Madison Schroder will be followed by Mark Falston. Mark Falston will be followed by Martin Bryan. Martin Bryan will be followed by Martin O'Neill. Was that Martin O'Neill?
Yes, I've got no comments at this time. I'm with the Nuclear Energy Institute, and I plan to submit a written comment.
Thank you so much.
Yes, no problem.
The next person will be Matthew Stanky, followed by Mays Southwick. Mays Southwick, or Smithwick, I'm sorry.
I didn't sign up to comment, I'm here to observe, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Was that Mays?
Yes.
Okay. Melanie Snyder will be followed by Michael Lee? Might be Michelle Lee? But is Melanie Snyder present? Okay. Michael Lee followed by Nicholas McMurray.
Hi there, this is Michelle Lee. And I will be submitting comments on behalf of a couple of organizations. So I'm just going to be speaking on behalf of myself right now as a private citizen. Sort of as a preliminary point, I would have to note, and this is not your fault, but this is really a document based on a completely speculative situation. You have HALU fabrication facilities that would involve different fuel designs, manufacturing different shapes, different forms, different chemical compositions, pebbles, rods, particles, you name it, at locations all over the United States, but you don't know where, but maybe it's at some old places, maybe it'll be some new places. You know, so there's really no dare there to give particularly informed opinion on. And I understand that is, again, not the fault of the Department of Energy. However, where I really take issue with your draft EIS is it's not an evaluation. You throw out certain facts, and you render conclusions, but you don't substantiate your conclusions. And some of the facts are absolutely scientifically false. So let me just focus narrowly on one area related to the scenario. So I'm going to quote the report. "Under this scenario, where no significant HALU production materializes, there would be no immediate change to the status quo. Existing electrical generation capacity would continue to operate, traditional electricity generation sources," and then you go into them. So that's the end of the quote. This is all history. With the scenario of no immediate change, you're not going to have any change either, because we're not talking about an immediate change. You're not going to be having nuclear power plants with HALU fuel anywhere within the next decade. Right? So the word immediate doesn't even make sense there. And when you're talking about the future, you need to compare what the future of HALU system would be with the future of the envisioned electrical and energy system, which would include efficiency and grid modernization, and renewables, and storage, and a battery. But you didn't do that.
Ms. Lee, please conclude your remarks.
So I'd like to check in again later if we have time.
Thank you very much. Nicholas McMurray will be followed by Patricia Marida. Patricia Marida would be followed by Patrick Hines.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name's Patricia Marida. I'm a coordinator with the Ohio Nuclear Free Network. On March 30th of 2021, three years ago, our organization sent a letter to the NRC requesting a programmatic EIS and proliferation review for Centrus American Centrifuge Operating, which already had been given a $115 million unbid contract to produce HALU at the Portsmouth nuclear site in Pikeville, Ohio. In August of that same year, we and the nonprofit Beyond Nuclear sent a petition for review for the NRC's approval of two Centrus HALU licenses, complaining that the process was segmented into pieces to avoid EIS scrutiny of the larger HALU development plan. And for doing this with only an EA Fonzie was in violation of NEPA. So now we're asking for this EIS. We'd like to see an environmental impact statement done for these Centrus licenses. And interestingly, Centrus cannot complete its designated 2024 production of HALU because, believe it or not, there are no containers for HALU. So perhaps you should look, this should also look at containers for HALU and how those might be looked at under the DEIS. Also, there's a deconversion of depleted uranium hexafluoride to uranium oxides. And now for depleted uranium weapons going on at the Portsmouth nuclear site. Or they did get an EA, and they did not do the required environmental impact statement. Again, this is in violation of NEPA. So Mid-America conversion needs to have, they need to have done an environmental impact statement for this process also. A true HALU EIS by the DOE would include having public meetings at every nuclear site in the nation. So that's what we request. Citizens have a right to say what we think of the creation and spreading of radioactivity that is poisoning our communities, like the communities around the Portsmouth nuclear site in Pikeville, Ohio. So we're going to submit to DOE the results of two epidemiological studies done in the area, and a multiple samplings of air and soil that found transuranics and enriched uranium in Pike and Sayota Counties, and about which the Department of Energy lied by saying the off-site radioactivity came from nuclear testing fallout. That concludes...
Thank you, Ms. Marida. Patrick Hines will be followed by Robin Engelhart Bagley. Robin Engelhart Bagley will be followed by Shannon Anderson.
Yes, hello, hi. This is Shannon Anderson with Powder River Basin Resource Council in Wyoming. And we're concerned that the NRC hasn't met its twin charge under NEPA, which is both to provide transparency to the public and to provide enough information to create an adequate decision by the agency. One of our main concerns is that there's no transparency in the document about the cost of this program. There's no dollar numbers anywhere in the document. This is substantial subsidies to private industry. It's also direct spend by the agency. It contributes to our federal debt. We live here in a state that is very fiscally conservative and overall is very concerned about the amount of subsidies and government spending related to the nuclear industry. And we asked DOE to have full transparency of the cost of this program. What is anticipated? What does that mean to the federal debt? What does it mean to the agency overall? Your budget, your spending? There just needs to be a lot greater transparency of that money. And we ask you, as other speakers have as well, along those lines, to be conservative. A lot of the assumptions in this document are unrealistic assumptions about the need for HALU, what the industry will develop to become. And as a result, we really just ask you to be conservative in your spending, in your budgeting, and in the government footprint of this program. We'd also ask you to, like similar speakers have before, to connect those actions that you have been doing as an agency. You have already been spending tremendous money for the nuclear industry, TerraPower here in Wyoming. And as a side note, we submitted a FOIA to the DOE to get, you know, spending reports for that project, and they were all held confidential. So there's a greater need to have transparency, make sure there's connected actions with the nuclear cycle across the country. There's been just tremendous money and spending, and to connect that with this program is really important. We also would just raise the issue of the 1872 Mining Act, which a lot of uranium, of course, falls under. And that has also tremendous consequences for taxpayers because uranium mined under the 1872 Mining Act is royalty-free. And there needs to be disclosure and information in your EIS about that. We'd also encourage you to look at Department of Interior reports related to the 1872 Mining Act and consult with them through the inter-agency working group process to make sure there's coordination between your agencies about the impacts related to uranium, particularly uranium mined under the 1872 Mining Act. And I guess I'm out of time. So thanks for listening, and we'll submit written comments as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Timothy Smith? So Timothy Smith is the last name on my list. I am going to go back and call on the people that I called on once before just to see if maybe they've joined us late. So I'm going to move a little more quickly. Abraham Brown. Arianna Northbird. Chloe Nelson. Daryl Gale. David McDangle. Debbie Rowan. Eugene Rosalie. Greg Schultz. Jane Van Prague. Janet Schluter. Jeff Sims. Kelly McGrath. Kelsey Shank. Lou Scriba. Louis, I'm sorry. Scriba. Madison Schroder. Mark Falston. Martin Bryan. Matthew Stanky. Melanie Snyder. Nicholas McMurray. Patrick Hines. Robin Engelhart Bagley. And Timothy Smith. We do have three hands up. I will call on the folks with their hands up in order as well. Dr. Anne Frisch, followed by Lee Blackburn. Dr. Anne Frisch, followed by Lee Blackburn. Dr. Frisch, did you have comments you wanted to make? Okay, Lee Blackburn?
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to make a second series of comments. First, I'd like to say that the DEIS is a bit of a farce when one of the alternatives is no action while HALU is already being produced at the ACP in Piketon. Also, you say enrichment will be from 19.75% to 20%. That's a farce because the license for the ACL permits enrichment up to 25%. So you need to check your facts. Thank you.
Thank you the second time, Mr. Blackburn. Anne Hedges?
Yeah, I don't know why it didn't show up in your list because I did register and got confirmation of my registration.
Well, we're happy to take you now. Thank you.
Okay. I just hope that didn't happen to others. So I'm Anne Hedges with Montana Environmental Information Center, which is a nonprofit organization in Montana that works on climate change every day. And we get the need to decarbonize, but that is, we believe that this whole process is being used as a smokescreen by businesses who are looking to make money off the federal government in pursuit of mythical decarbonization techniques. DOE should not overestimate the value of this sector. This isn't 1970. We have plenty of low-cost alternatives to nuclear power, especially SMRs. This is just a way to make some money off taxpayers. In Montana, we already pay far too much for our power, thanks to coal and gas. We don't need to increase our bills even more by DOE chasing unicorns. DOE needs to be realistic about this industry and differentiate hype from reality. Projected HALU demand in the DIS is unrealistic. No projects exist as of now. None of the companies have demonstrated their commercial or technical viability. It seems absurd to have such high estimates of the need for this fuel. MEIC is particularly concerned about mining and the impacts to water resources that are getting scarcer: low-income communities who live near mines, and wildlife and endangered species. Data show there are a lot of uranium deposits in Montana, but yet there is no mention of potential mining in Montana. Instead, it assumes mining in states with previous uranium mines. I hope that's the case. But DOE's optimistic commercialization schedule for SMRs is unreasonable, unnecessary, expensive, harmful, and opaque. DOE needs to scale back and consider those places where uranium may be coming out of the ground. DOE says that this is based upon previous NEPA analysis in previous mines. But the DEIS talks about environmental analyses that have been completed for facilities to perform uranium mining and milling. EISs are done in advance. They are proposed projects. Where is the epidemiological data on communities where mining has actually occurred? Where is the data showing the communities, their water resources, and their wildlife were not harmed? Basing this upon projected impacts from previous EISs is absolutely insufficient and doesn't capture the impacts that actually occur on the ground. OSM also regulates coal in Montana, yet we have plenty of examples where the projections in the original EISs did not fit reality. Water resources, wildlife, aquatic life, and agriculture have been harmed in ways that OSM didn't project. Where's the follow-up? There doesn't seem to be any here. The US doesn't purchase coal or gas for utilities. It makes no sense for their government to go so big on a technology that's in its infancy and potentially dangerous. If the US government is to buy fuel for a nation's industry, the project should be as conservative as possible, based upon actual need and not gross estimates of future demand. The wind is free, the solar is free.
Ms. Hedges, we need you to conclude.
...are deployed and developed rapidly. A viable SMR industry doesn't exist in this country, and it is not up to DOE to help make that happen.
Thank you, Ms. Hedges. Next up is Lee, oh no, excuse me, Michelle Lee.
Thank you.
Did I get it right this time?
You did, you did.
Good.
So just to continue the point that I was making before, the comparison, metrics is an illegitimate comparison. With no action alternative, you made the statement that if there was no action, then you would have continued status quo, which would obviously be true for the near term. We're not going to change over tomorrow, but would be very false based on concurrent federal government policy even, in terms of support for alternatives that are cleaner and that are safer and are less costly, including renewables, and efficiency, and storage, and grid modernization, and so on. So what you're actually doing is you're taking out money, a huge opportunity cost of tens to hundreds of billions of dollars, to divert it to support a technology that's been heavily, heavily subsidized since its inception, has increasingly become more costly virtually every year, rather than spending that money for the energy system that is stated by the federal government to be the energy system of the future, renewable-based system, which is getting cheaper each year. And to make the point again that somebody else had made, you're not putting in any cost in this study. So that alone makes it an effectively meaningless document. I would just also add, it is false, absolutely scientific false, to claim that nuclear is carbon-free. The full fuel cycle, which is what's relevant for greenhouse gases, is not carbon-free. And carbon-14, which is radioactive carbon, is created during the decision process. So you should not have a scientifically factual incorrect statement in this document. And I would just add that your health evaluation is essentially nonexistent. And I would, I know I'm running out of time, would really strongly urge the DOE to include discussion of its leveraging advances in modern science to revitalize low-dose radiation research in the United States. A report that it supported, done by the National Academies and published in 2022, which noted that the adverse health outcomes of low dose and low level radiation exposure, that there's increasing evidence it's associated with non-cancer health outcomes, such as cardiovascular disease, neurological disorders, immune dysfunction, cataracts, and so forth. You should also be identifying that...
I need you to conclude your remarks, please.
Yes, that for vulnerable populations, such as a developing fetus, babies, girls, women, the risks of radioactivity exposure are far higher than what the average is stated, even for cancer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Next up, we have Lee Ford.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to comment. My name's Lee Ford. I'm the Director of Snake River Alliance. We're based in Shoshone Bannock Land, southern Idaho. We formed because we found out the Department of Energy was injecting our sole source aquifer with radioactive waste. And we received also the melted down core from Three Mile Island. We will submit our comments in writing, either individually or in coalition, but we do support the no-action alternative. This is a waste of money, and it's a waste of time on false solutions. I'd like to echo what I think 100% of the commenters have said and what Michelle Lee just said, in that it is not carbon-free, and there's no way it could help us meet our carbon neutral goals in time. The proliferation risk is too big, the security risks are too big, the transportation is going to spread risk through communities, and risk health, water. And as you heard from the good people in Ohio, it's dangerous to workers, and the exposure to HALU as a hotter fuel with more fissile material is very concerning. Both my grandfathers worked at Idaho National Lab, and they both died of radiological-related cancers. So I can attest to the need, like Michelle Lee said, to do more health studies. And thank you for the opportunity to comment. Like I said, we'll submit better, more thorough comments in writing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Dr. Anne Frisch.
Yes, before you didn't hear me because I was muted, but I really object to not being able to see other people here, so I ask you to open up the videos for people to see and for me to speak. I'm very concerned about the transportation. I'm concerned about the whole thing because nuclear is such an antiquated, dangerous technology. We shouldn't even be talking about it. I have not read this proposal. I am very concerned about something that I think flies under the radar, and that is, this material is going to be transported from here to there in our neighborhoods, on our highways, under our bridges, and this is very dangerous. And I make reference to the shipment of high-level liquid material from Chalk River to South Carolina in a truck that was never built to carry liquid material, nuclear material. So we know that the authorities are not having security of our neighborhoods and our children in their minds when they're doing this. I think this is an industry promotion that does not take into consideration Fukushima's and other disasters. But the disasters could take place right in our neighborhoods. A truck could turn over on a bridge, and the water, drinking water, undrinkable for a million years because it has some cesium in it. And this is unacceptable just to promote an industry cause. It is not needed for anything, basically. It's dangerous, and we should stop doing it.
Thank you so much, Dr. Frisch. It looks like I missed one. Joseph DiMar. Maybe pronounced wrong. Joseph R. DiMar?
No, you pronounced it correctly.
Okay, thank you. You can go ahead.
Okay. Okay, my comments, I'm scheduled to comment after 10 o'clock, and I'll do most of my comments then, but right now I want to take advantage to point out that the basic assumption behind this DIS is false. Nuclear power is not needed to meet our carbon-free goals. And an example of that can be found in Uruguay, which is now essentially 100% carbon-free, consciously deciding to do that without nuclear power because they knew it was a distraction and a waste of time and money. Portugal, similarly, without nuclear, has reached 80% renewables. And you're required to use the best available information, so I suggest that you include in your reading, in your resources, the book No Miracles Needed by Dr. Mark Jacobson, and look at the facts that he points out there before you choose which alternative. And in fact, he should lead you to the no-action alternative. One thing that you also need to take into account is the fact that there might be no takers for this HALU. There's no guarantee that Terra Power is going to succeed as a company. New scale is in the process of failing. The first responsibility of the NRC is to protect the safety of the public, and creating this HALU is in itself a risk, since it is a toxic, dangerous radioactive substance. There needs to be a process for attenuation if there's no demand for your product, because right now renewables are replacing nuclear all around the world. And by the time we get to the 10-year mark, nuclear will have probably been canceled all over the world, since renewables are so cheap and so readily available. So simply setting a goal of 250 tons is insane, and that was demonstrated by both the UK and Japan, who have plutonium reprocessing. The UK is sitting on 100 tons of plutonium it does not know what to do with. Japan is sitting on 50 tons of plutonium it does not know what to do with. The US should not similarly be stuck with 250 tons of HALU it doesn't know what to do with if there's no demand for it. So there needs to be a stepped process. You've already made some. Why don't you stop there and see if there's any more demand before making more? And as I said, I'm also signed up to speak at 10 o'clock, and that's where I'll be giving most of my comments, but I wanted to get that in while I had the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiMar. Patrick Marida, or Pat Marida?
Yeah, yeah, my name's Patricia Marida. I'm speaking again. I'm the coordinator of the Ohio Nuclear Free Network, or one of the coordinators. I want to talk about proliferation, weapons proliferation, and also the conflation between civilian and military uses of HALU. 19.75% is a laughable amount because it really is almost impossible to get at that precise an amount. So why 19.75%? Well, at 20%, it cannot be exported legally, according to US law. And also at 20%, it is no longer low enriched. It is by definition high enriched. So there is a desire to export this. And there's competition between the different states, like Russia and so forth, to export nuclear technology and to get developing countries on the political side and dependent upon the United States militarily and politically. And then this HALU, of course, is, the conflation with military uses is that it's very easily enriched to higher enrichment of U-235 for military uses. And everything about the industry overlaps, almost from mining, milling, enrichment, all overlap between nuclear and civilian. They have the same waste. They have many of the same experts that work on it, the personnel, the parts. So, and there are laws in the US that make it not legal to go between military and civilian. They're supposed to be separate, but indeed they are not. And HALU is a prime example. Portsmouth Nuclear Site is a prime example. And also, they're using the waste then to make depleted uranium weapons, including the certain type of nuclear bombs that can have the amount of explosion power dialed up or down. So I think that part of a DEIS should certainly include proliferation and the overlap between military and civilian uses. Thank you.
Thank you so much. There are no new hands up, and there are no more people on the list. I thought I'd circle back on two people that spoke earlier that have not spoken a second time, Jesse Deronwater and Shannon Anderson. Would you like to add anything to what you said previously? Well, we will take a recess. We'll be here. If I see any hands go up, we'll go back on the record and take additional comments. Again, we're scheduled to go till 7:45, so if somebody decides they want to make a comment between now and 7:45, we'd be happy to call on you to speak. If you are, oh, you took the slide down. You want to put that slide back up? There's the slide that has the addresses for submitting comments. No? Oh, there's some, oh, we do have some hands up. Okay, thank you for letting me know. Phone number 2341. If you would like to speak.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
This is Tammy Thatcher in Idaho, and I would like to give some comments, focus on spent fuel disposal. But I would first like to point out that the Price-Anderson Act liability coverage does not apply to reactors that are below 100 megawatts electric. A lot of these small reactors and microreactors will not have Price-Anderson Act liability. And I think everybody's mind, our home, your land will not have any other insurance policy. And it's confusing because it's different than it has been for the large light water reactors. Spent fuel dry storage facilities here may not be covered by Price-Anderson. The presence of an operating reactor and so forth, that kind of slides under the radar, I wanted to point out. Onto the topic of spent nuclear fuel, it's not often talked about how Yucca Mountain was designed and by regulation was to hold no more than 70,000 metric tons. Nation is on track, have 140,000 metric tons of spent fuel to Yucca Mountain. Operating existing Department of Energy has added spent fuel disposal problem of increasing...
We're having a little bit of trouble hearing you. Are you speaking directly into your phone? Hello?
Let's see, is this...
That's better.
I'm sorry, is this better?
Yes.
This would be better. I'm sorry.
We'd like you to start...
So we already need, we already need two Yucca Mountains, and the Department of Energy has no spent nuclear fuel disposal program. The program has not been able to take money for disposal for electricity generation since 2014 because DOE has no program. The draft EIS has strange and erroneous statements in it, like the spent nuclear fuel would be irretrievably stored underground in sealed tunnels. Well, there is no decision on the type of repository, when it would be sealed, when you could seal it 100 years after you emplaced it, completely not based on any documentation for any repository plan. The EIS says that the commitment to DOE, that DOE has for disposing of spent nuclear fuel, it references another EIS for a materials testing reactor. It can't just make that bold claim DOE is committed to spent nuclear fuel disposal in this EIS. I mean, that's how, the Department of Energy is committed to giving the impression that it's working on a spent nuclear fuel disposal repository, but it isn't. It has no program. And it also is way behind the game on even assuring the safety of the spent nuclear fuel we already have. It has research gaps identified in 2012. It's still working on, doesn't have answers to. The problem keeps getting more complex. DOE's research keeps getting farther behind. These advanced reactors mean that the Department of Energy really will never catch up with providing a technical basis for the storage and disposal solutions that we need. So there's a complete lack of referenceable, accurate, transparent information regarding the elephant in the room, which is all the spent nuclear fuel this HALU program would create if it is actually to make any difference whatsoever. But it's going to be deployed so slowly, it will never make a difference in combating climate. So, thank you.
Will you please give us your name? We didn't hear your name when you started.
My name is Tammy Thatcher.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Okay. The next person, Joseph DiMar, you have your hand up again?
Yes, I forgot to mention that I am representing the, I'm the co-chair of the Wood County Ohio Green Party. Also, I wanted to add a few more things. The draft EIS claims that, quote, "most," unquote, "advanced reactor designs require HALU." There's no support for this statement. As I understand it, most of the more advanced designs, most of the SMRs are basically scaled-down versions of regular pressurized water reactors or boiling water reactors. We need to know how or why the Department of Energy believes this. At the moment, it looks like this is only benefiting one company, and that, of course, is Terra Power, Bill Gates's company. And I'm going to be talking more about that in my 10 o'clock remarks. But I do want to point out that the NRC's first responsibility is to protect the safety of the public. And even though this money, this proposed project is a result of congressional direction, Congress cannot direct the NRC to violate its basic purpose and its fundamental reason for existence. So choosing the no-action alternative would be a real possibility, and in keeping with the organization's goals and objectives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DiMar. Seeing that there are no hands up, we will, I don't want to call it recess. We'll just take a little bit of a break here and watch to see if any other hands go up. We're scheduled to go till 7:45, so the opportunity will be available until that time, if anyone on the call decides they would like to join in and provide comments. the slide that's up right now has the addresses for submitting comments. If anybody's interested in going ahead and dropping off before we close at 7:45, here's the information that Looks like Joseph DiMar would like to speak again?
Yes, may as well. Take the bird in the hand, and I'll give my remarks. On page two of the summary of the EIS, there's an incorrect statement. NRC claims that there's a, quote, "long history of activities being conducted safely," unquote. It's talking about activities such as mining and milling and processing of uranium. Actually, what there is, is a long history of contamination. We only have to look at West Valley, New York, piped in Ohio, the Nola Chucky River and Davie Crockett Lake, and that's in Irwin, Tennessee, that was contaminated back in 2010. Cold Water Creek, Missouri, of course. In 2016, the Canyon Mine in Nevada flooded, an aquifer was pierced, radioactive water was put into the aquifer and sprayed on the grounds of the Cabash National Forest. ProPublica in 12322 article about starting with Cold War legacy lists 48 sites that the NRC is supposed to have been taken care of, many of which are still contaminating grounded surface waters. In 2015, the NRC canceled a health study that would show that the devastating effects of these accidents, because they claimed they did not have $8 million. So the EIS, the final EIS, must explain these failures and the remedies for them and give concrete, detailed practices explaining how and why those wouldn't happen with this project. Otherwise, the public must assume that these kinds of contaminations would happen again. Also, the agency is required to use the best available data, information. I noticed that none of the references include the InWork study, which was published in the British Medical Journal on August 16th of 2023, titled "Cancer Mortality of Low-Dose Exposure to Ionizing Radiation." This study, based on 300,000 rad workers with more than 40 years of data, these are measured exposures, not estimates. This shows that all the estimates that NRC are using for the damaging effects are wrong. It shows that even at the very low doses, it increases cancer mortality substantially. And this is not estimates the way all the NRC studies are. This is actual measured exposure. And so this information must be incorporated into any final EIS statement. Finally, HALU, right now, is only benefiting one company, Terra Power, that's owned by Bill Gates. Bill Gates gave $500,000 to the Biden inauguration fund and $70 million to a dark money PAC to elect Democrats in last election. The social damage caused by the loss of confidence in our institutions, like the government and NRC, are causing large destabilizing impacts on the culture of Americans. And the only advantage, the only way around that for this project is to ensure that Bill Gates does not personally benefit, that his company does not receive any economic benefit from this project. That is, if you were going to sell him HALU, it has to be at market prices and not give it to him for free or give it to him for cheap so he can make tons of profit off his reactor designs.
We will wait and see if anyone else wants to show up or put their hand up to speak. Okay, I see a hand for Connie Klein.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I just have a couple of procedural questions. Will the DOE respond specifically to individuals? Will the individuals' questions or comments be responded to, or will this just be a general response?
We're not taking questions this evening. As I said in my script, there will be a comment-response document that will be prepared, and it will be included in the final environmental impact statement.
I heard that, but will it be specific to individuals that have either submitted comments? And there were a few questions tonight, either tonight or in writing. Will the responses specifically address those individuals?
Can I suggest that you make that as a comment? Because we're not taking questions tonight.
Okay, so...
You would like to see comments responded to individually? Is that what you're suggesting?
Right, right.
Okay.
Just specific individuals.
Okay.
What did you say? Was there a, I may have missed it. Was there a timeline for, or what? Oh, that's a question.
Hard, isn't it?
I'd like to know the timeline for issuing the responses and the DEIS.
The next document will be the final EIS, not the DEIS. The DIS is...
I'm sorry, yes, yes.
But it will include a final environmental impact statement. I don't know the answer. And again, we're not taking questions tonight. So...
Thank you.
If you're joining us late, just so you know what's going on, we've called on all the people that pre-registered to speak. If you would like to speak, please raise your hand using the raise hand function in Zoom, and we will call on you to speak. This session is scheduled to go till 7:45. And we're here and waiting for anyone that would like to provide comments. It looks like Joseph DeMar has his hand up. Would you like to speak again?
Yes, I'd like to just expand a little bit on my third point about the erosion of and the large destabilizing impact culturally on the scandals that have been facing the nuclear industry in recent years. I was deeply involved in Ohio in the House Bill Six scandal, where a nuclear corporation spent $65 million bribing one of our legislators to push through a billion dollar subsidy for their nuclear plants. This follows, of course, a huge scandal in Illinois involving kickbacks. And Holtech, which was just recently granted a $1.5 billion loan by the Department of Energy, was just recently fined a substantial amount of money for lying to federal regulators in order to get other grants that it wasn't actually eligible for. The cumulative impact of all these scandals in the nuclear industry on the public's trust in both government and the nuclear industry can't be overstated. The Nuclear Regulatory Commission's major function is regulation. That's why it's in the name. That's why you were separated from the Atomic Energy Commission. And yet we see increasingly you being pushed into the role of the old Atomic Energy Commission of both promoting and trying to regulate this industry. This is a recipe for disaster. And the basic idea is that, or what the public basically is seeing are sweetheart deals, backroom deals, as was alluded to by several of the people here. Much of the information in the DEIS is not transparent. It's not clear how you've come to the conclusion that most designs are going to require HALU. It's not clear where you're getting any of your information. It creates the impression that the NRC is in close meeting with the industry and locking out the public. And just like with House Bill Six, what we had then was testimony from many people in the public who were opposed to that. And unbeknownst to us, the regulators, the legislators who were listening, spent three days listening to our testimony overwhelmingly opposed to House Bill Six, never had any intention on acting on what we were saying because they were basically being bribed by FirstEnergy. And I just want to emphasize again, the importance of considering the no action alternative and remembering that the more and the closer the NRC is seen with the industry it's supposed to be regulating, the less people, trust people have in government altogether.
Thank you, Mr. DeMar. Am I saying it right, DeMar? Anyway.
I, I say DeMar. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have 10 more minutes in this scheduled meeting. So if you're interested in commenting before we stop at 7:45, please let us know and raise your hand. Michelle Lee has raised her hand.
Hi again, just so we don't have to just listen to crickets. I'll, I'll make one final point. Along the lines of the agency needing to look at the best available evidence, one area where that is glaringly absent in the report is the review of the risks associated with climate change. And these should be fully and comprehensively looked at. And I urge the DOE to consider the recent GAO report. It was just released yesterday. Nuclear power plants, NRC should take actions to fully consider the potential effects of climate change. It's an excellent report, but I would add that some of what it talks about actually is even outdated because it's relying in large part on some government reports and studies that are already outdated because of the acceleration of the effects of climate change, including things such as increasing ferocious wildfires and floods and storms, which we're dealing with today. Probably a lot of us on this webinar right now or Zoom call. That, that, the, simply mentioning the fact that climate change is an issue is not an analysis. The, and while you, you're limited in how you can evaluate things, given the utter lack of specifics for sites and types of reactors, I mean, types of facilities, you can still make some of the general points that, that are consistent with the best available science and the climate risks and the hazards, which would include informing the public as to the worst possible case scenario that is plausible. And that would have to include an evaluation of multiple climate events occurring concurrently. That has happened multiple times in the last two years. And that, one of the risks associated with, with that kind of phenomenon is you have resources to mitigate events diverted. And you have roads inaccessible and you have transportation infrastructure that can be absolutely destroyed. And that kind of analysis is absent in the existing report. Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Lee. So a five-minute warning. With a reminder that we will resume at 8 o'clock with a second meeting this evening. We have officially reached the end of this public hearing. On behalf of the U.S. Department of Energy, I would like to thank you for your participation in the public comment process for the HALU environmental impact statement. I would like to emphasize that DOE will be accepting comments via email and mail until April 22nd, 2024. And as a reminder, written comments should be sent to Dr., excuse me, Mr. James Lovejoy, who is the DOE's EIS Document Manager, by mail to U.S. Department of Energy Idaho Operations Office, located at 1955 Fremont Avenue, Mail Stop 1235. And that's in Idaho Falls, Idaho, 83415. Also, you can use the email address of haleu- hyphen Those same addresses can be used to be, request to be added to the mailing list for project notifications. For more information, including the, the slides that were used for this evening's presentation, are, those are available on the project website, Let the record reflect that it is now 7:46 PM and we will adjourn this hearing. Thank you so much for participating this evening. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us for this virtual public hearing. My name is Wendy Lowe, and I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing on behalf of the U.S. Department of Energy's Office of Nuclear Energy. In compliance with the National Environmental Policy Act, the Department of Energy has published a draft environmental impact statement, which analyzes the impacts of DOE's proposed action to acquire high- assay, low-enriched uranium, or HALU, for commercial use and demonstration projects, and to facilitate the domestic commercialization of HALU production. Before I get too far, I'd like to introduce Billy Sanders. Billy and colleague Catherine Willett are providing American Sign Language interpretation for us tonight. The goals of this public hearing are to explain the process used to analyze the proposed action and alternatives, and to provide you, as members of the public, with an opportunity to submit oral comments on the draft environmental impact statement. In the first portion of this meeting, DOE's Program Manager for the HALU program will tell you about the draft EIS. During the second portion, you will be invited to provide oral comments. Both oral and written comments submitted throughout the 45-day comment period will be considered by the Department of Energy. Comments received during this time will help DOE refine its analysis, identify new information, and consider additional alternatives during development of the final environmental impact statement. Today is Wednesday, April 3, 2024, and the time is now 8:01 PM Eastern. This virtual public hearing is one of three that are being held this evening. The first hearing began at 6:00 PM Eastern, and the third will begin at 10:00 PM Eastern. Please be aware that all three hearings are being recorded. The recordings of all three virtual hearings will be combined into one file and uploaded to the project website within two weeks of this hearing. The information portion of this public hearing will begin shortly with a presentation by Department of Energy's Program Manager, Michael Reim. His presentation was prerecorded to make sure the information presented is consistent for all three sessions this evening. The presentation will last approximately 10 minutes and will provide information about the National Environmental Policy Act as well as background information about the proposed action. For those calling in on an audio-only device, I would invite you to go to the project website so you can see an uploaded version of the presentation slides. The project website is located at That link is also provided in the chat for those of you who are participating online with Zoom. Following the presentation, I will explain the procedures we will be using to take comments.
Hello, and welcome to this public hearing. I'm Michael Reim, Program Manager for the U.S. Department of Energy, Office of Nuclear Energy. And today, we'll be talking about the draft environmental impact statement for DOE activities in support of commercial production of high- assay, low-enriched uranium, also known as HALU. First, I'd like to give a presentation overview, beginning with the National Environmental Policy Act overview. This will include the purpose of an environmental impact statement, or EIS, comments received during the scoping period, and the purpose of public hearings in general. Additionally, I'll be discussing the project background. This includes the purpose and need, a proposed action and alternatives, scope of activities, approach to the impact analysis, the impact analysis categories, and a summary of potential impacts. First, we'll begin with the National Environmental Policy Act. NEPA is a federal law that requires federal agencies to identify and consider the environmental consequences of implementing projects. An EIS is prepared for proposed actions likely to have significant effects. An EIS also analyzes the effects of a proposed action and is prepared before actions are taken that could limit the selection of an alternative or result in adverse environmental effects. The EIS process incorporates public input, which is why we're here today, and informs the public and decision-making process, which is the purpose of this presentation. Additionally, the purpose of an environmental impact statement is to identify the purpose and need for the proposed action, to identify alternatives. This includes a reasonable range of alternatives that meet the purpose and need, including the preferred alternative. This also includes a no-action alternative. It also describes the existing environment at candidate sites or areas to be affected by the alternatives. It evaluates the environmental consequences of the alternatives using the best available information. It identifies mitigation measures, and it evaluates direct, indirect, and cumulative impacts. The scoping period for the HALU EIS took place from June 5, 2023, until July 20, 2023. 409 individual comments were identified. DOE reviewed each comment document, characterized the comments, and found the public wanted several topics to be covered in the draft EIS. This list includes accidents in human health, alternatives, climate change, conversion, cost analysis, deconversion, environmental justice and justice 40, enrichment, environmental impacts, fuel fabrication, NEPA in general, nonproliferation, nuclear waste management, opposition to the project, out-of-scope comments, purpose and need for reactor technologies, regulatory concerns, spent fuel management, storage, support activities, transportation, and tribal consultation. In response to the comments received, DOE expanded discussions about how project locations would be chosen in the Reader's Guide in Section 1.0 of Volume 1 and added a nonproliferation section in Section 3.9 of Volume 1. Other topics raised were either already identified in the NOI and covered in the draft EIS or were deemed out of scope for the EIS. Next, I'll discuss the purpose of public hearings and the goals of public hearings. The purpose is to provide the public a forum to learn more about the draft HALU EIS and its proposed action, as well as to solicit public comments prior to the final EIS. The goals of the public hearings are threefold: to inform the public about potential environmental impacts of the proposed action and alternatives; secondly, to seek feedback from stakeholders, including federal, state, tribal, local agencies, NGOs, and the public on the draft EIS; and finally, to provide opportunities for stakeholders and other interested parties to make formal comments on the draft EIS. Next, I'll discuss the project background for HALU. One aspect of a clean energy future is the sustainment and expanded development of safe and affordable nuclear power. And one key element of that goal is the availability of fuel to power those reactors. HALU is a crucial material required by most U.S. advanced reactors. Most designs require HALU in order to achieve smaller designs, longer operating cycles, and increased efficiencies over current nuclear energy technologies. However, there are currently limited options for acquiring HALU. HALU is not currently available from domestic suppliers, and gaps in supply could delay the deployment of advanced reactors in a timeframe that supports the nation's net zero emissions targets by 2050. Currently, commercial nuclear fuel suppliers can't produce HALU largely due to market uncertainties and infrastructure gaps. This poses a concern for the development, demonstration, and deployment of many advanced nuclear technologies. To accommodate these gaps and help meet the nation's net zero emissions targets, the Energy Act of 2020 directs the Secretary of Energy to establish and carry out, through the Office of Nuclear Energy, a program to support the availability of HALU for civilian domestic research, development, demonstration, and commercial use. Further, Section 3131 of the recently enacted National Defense Authorization Act for fiscal year 2024, among other things, seeks to expeditiously increase domestic production of HALU to meet the needs of advanced nuclear reactor developers and the consortium established under Section 2001A of the Energy Act of 2020. The proposed action is to acquire, through procurement from commercial sources, HALU enriched to at least 19.75 and less than 20 weight percent uranium-235 over a 10-year period of performance, and to facilitate the establishment of commercial HALU fuel and to facilitate the establishment of commercial HALU fuel production. Given the variety of HALU applications, the initial capability is intended to be flexible and to be able to accommodate a number of items: enrichments of U-235 to greater than 5 and less than 20 weight percent; production of up to 290 metric tons of HALU at multiple enrichment facilities; modular HALU fuel cycle design concepts, and to accommodate future growth; deconversion of UF6 to forms suitable for production of a variety of fuels and to include oxides and metal. Under the no-action alternative, DOE would not acquire through procurement from commercial sources up to 290 metric tons of HALU or facilitate the establishment of commercial HALU fuel production. The EIS addresses six activities associated with the acquisition of 290 metric tons of HALU: extraction and recovery of uranium ore processed to yellowcake; conversion of the yellowcake into UF6; enrichment, including enrichment to no more than 5 weight percent; enrichment greater than 5 and less than 10 weight percent; and enrichment from 10 to less than 20 percent U-235 in an NRC Category 2 facility. It also includes deconversion of UF6 to uranium oxide, metal, and potentially other forms in a Category 2 facility; storage in a Category 2 facility; and transportation of uranium and HALU between facilities. In addition to the previous activities, the EIS discusses three reasonably foreseeable activities that could result in the implementation of the proposed action. This includes fuel fabrication for a variety of fuels; reactor operation, including demonstration tests, power and isotope production; and spent fuel storage and disposition. While not specifically a part of the proposed action, the impacts from these reasonably foreseeable activities are acknowledged and addressed to the extent practicable. One contributing factor to the significance of environmental impacts is where facilities are located. However, locations will not be chosen as part of the Record of Decision for this EIS as potential HALU fuel cycle facilities are subject to an ongoing procurement process, including responses to requests for proposals. To determine the potential environmental consequences without site-specific information, DOE evaluated existing NEPA documentation for uranium fuel cycle facilities used in a low-enriched uranium fuel cycle as well as available HALU fuel cycle NEPA reviews. The activities described in the proposed action are not unique. Extensive NEPA evaluation documentation exists for environmental consequences of similar activities. Since the proposed action is to acquire HALU from commercial sources, those commercial sources could propose a range of location scenarios for producing HALU. Scenarios could include the use of existing uranium fuel cycle facilities with modifications or expansions. It could include construction and operation of a new facility at an existing industrial site or brownfield site. And it also could include the construction and operation of a new facility at a previously undisturbed site or greenfield site. To estimate potential impacts associated with the proposed action, this EIS's subject matter experts leveraged the extensive existing NEPA documentation's impact assessments and determined relative impacts associated with performing these activities at existing facilities, brownfield sites, or greenfield sites using the NRC's impact assessment categories. Potential modification, construction, and operation of HALU fuel cycle facilities would be subject to U.S. Nuclear Regulatory Commission and other federal agency or agreement state licensing, including NEPA review and potentially other federal and state permitting. This EIS adopts the NRC impact assessment categories from the NEPA documents that were used as the basis for the impact analysis. Small impacts are not detectable or are so minor that they neither destabilize nor noticeably alter any important attribute of the resource. Moderate impacts are sufficient to alter noticeably but not destabilize important attributes of the resource. And large impacts are clearly noticeable and are sufficient to destabilize important attributes of the resource. This slide summarizes the impacts of citing a HALU facility at the three location scenarios analyzed in this EIS. For existing uranium fuel cycle facilities, most impacts would be small. The greatest potential for large impact is associated with mining and milling, and impact levels are mine-specific. For other industrial sites or brownfield sites, impacts are generally arranged from small to moderate with potentially large impacts in areas associated with site demographics and historic, cultural, and ecological resources. For previously undeveloped or greenfield sites, this is similar to locating at brownfield sites with potentially larger impacts than brownfield due to increased unknowns about site characteristics predominantly pertaining to historic, cultural, and ecological resources. This concludes the end of the presentation portion of the meeting, and I'd like to thank you again for your participation in the EIS process.
Thank you, Mr. Reim. That concludes the information portion of this virtual hearing. Next, we will begin accepting comments on the Draft Environmental Impact Statement. As the moderator, it is my job to make sure that this hearing is conducted in a respectful manner and ensure that we provide a fair opportunity to provide oral comments. Michael Reim will be listening to the comments on behalf of the Department of Energy, but please understand that he and other DOE representatives are here to listen. They will not be responding to any comments during this hearing. A court reporter is also present off-screen to transcribe each comment during this hearing. Please try to speak clearly into your microphone to help ensure the court reporter can accurately record your comments. I'd like to emphasize that providing oral comments during this virtual public hearing is only one of the ways you can participate in the EIS process. You may also submit written comments by sending them via U.S. mail or by email. Written comments on the draft EIS can be sent to Mr. James Lovejoy, who is DOE's EIS Document Manager, and mailed to U.S. Department of Energy Idaho Operations Office, located at 1955 Avenue, excuse me, Fremont Avenue, Mail Stop 1235 in Idaho Falls, Idaho, 83415. If you prefer, you're welcome to send comments via email to HALU, or H-A-L-U hyphen EIS, at nuclear.energy.gov. Those same addresses can be used to request to be added to the mailing list for project notifications. DOE will consider all comments received or postmarked by the end of the public comment period, which will end on April 22nd, 2024. All comments will be given equal consideration, regardless of whether they are submitted orally or in writing. The comments received throughout the comment period will be compiled and incorporated into a comment-response document. The comment-response document will include DOE's responses to comments that have been received, and it will be included in the final environmental impact statement. The opportunity to provide comments on the draft EIS began with the publication of the Notice of Availability on March 8th, 2024. The Notice of Availability included information about how commenters could preregister to provide oral comments during this session. As we begin the oral comment portion of this hearing, we have seventeen people who have registered to speak, and we'll begin by taking their comments first. If you're interested in providing comments during this public hearing but didn't register ahead of time, we will do our best to provide an opportunity for you to comment as well. You can let us know that you're interested in commenting by using the raise hand function in Zoom. Zoom keeps track of people who raise their hands in order, and we will call on you on a first-come, first-served basis. Time permitting, we will allow those with raised hands to provide oral comments after hearing from the preregistered attendees. If you're calling in by telephone, you may also raise your hand by dialing *9. To allow a fair opportunity to speak to as many people as possible, oral comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. To help you keep track of time, a digital countdown clock will be provided on screen. This session is scheduled to go until 9:45 PM Eastern. If there's time remaining before we are scheduled to end this session, we may provide the opportunity for anyone who has already spoken to have a second opportunity to provide comments. I will call the names of two people at a time to give you a bit of notice when it's almost your turn to speak. When I call on you to provide your comments, our technical support team will unmute your microphone. Please begin by stating your name and the name of any organization that you are representing in an official capacity tonight. Your three minutes will begin at that point. Regardless of whether you register to speak ahead of time or you've raised your hand to speak, if you change your mind about speaking, please let us know while you're unmuted, and I will move on to the next person in the queue. We recognize that three minutes is a brief amount of time, and we encourage you to provide more detailed comments in writing to ensure that all of your thoughts, concerns, and suggestions on the draft EIS can be fully captured in the record. I will let you know when you've run out of time. If you're still speaking once your three minutes are up, I will ask you to conclude your remarks, and then I will call on the next speaker. Please understand that if we do have to cut you off, it's to ensure that we can hear from as many people as possible and that everyone who wants to speak during the public hearing has a fair opportunity to do so. We will accommodate as many people as we can until 9:45 PM Eastern Time. One final request I'd like to make of you tonight. I know that there are some of you that may have strong opinions about DOE's proposal. We hope that everyone will share their opinions in a respectful manner. One of the main purposes of a public hearing is to give each of you an opportunity to provide your thoughts to DOE about the draft environmental impact statement. We're grateful that you've taken time out of your busy schedules to participate in this virtual public hearing. And with that, we will begin taking comments. So, on the list for this particular session, the first person is Bryn Hammerstrom, and Bryn will be followed by Jay Jones. Is Bryn with us? Okay, Jay Jones will be followed by Dale Duar. Dale Duar will be followed by Diane Diarigo.
I'm okay. I unmuted myself.
Oh, okay, very good. Start with your name.
Dale Duar.
Okay, thank you, Dale.
I'm from Canada, and I represent International Physicians for Prevention of Nuclear War Canada. I don't know how I got on your speakers list because I didn't actually apply. So, if you don't mind, I would like to keep my comments. I may want to put my hand up later.
Okay, that's fine. We won't force you to speak. Okay. Diane Diarigo, followed by Jan Budart.
Hi, I'm Diane Diarigo with Nuclear Information and Resource Service. We have opposition to the production of HALU. DOE's projections of HALU demand are entirely unrealistic. The amount of capacity from HALU-dependent reactor designs on which DOE's EIS is based are unrealistic. They are potentially science fiction. There's no evidence that these reactors will be licensed or certified or built. The companies promoting reactor designs that would run on HALU are in a chicken-and-egg position for widespread marketing of their designs. What we've got is we have no HALU, and we have no reactors or designs certified or licensed by the NRC that can use HALU. So, what it appears that DOE is doing here is just trying to use tax money to bolster a whole scheme that is objectionable. And part of the EIS should be addressing the fact in the no-action alternative of not proceeding with it. So, the companies are in a chicken-and-egg position as they try to promote their designs on a business level. They're entering the business at their own risk, but the Department of Energy here is using our tax money to make something that wouldn't be economically viable viable. The industry requires a fuel that isn't commercially available at a scale necessary to support wide deployment of their reactor designs, but the number of potential projects in the pipeline is very small, and none of the companies have demonstrated their commercial or technical viability. If HALU enrichment and production capacity can be scaled to industry demand, then it does not require DOE to sponsor it. The billions of dollars of taxpayer investment that would be at risk is unjustified. Build It or They Will Come is not a viable business plan. DOE is woefully negligent in managing the existing massive stockpiles of depleted uranium, and this waste will be even much more intense. The high-level waste that would result would be much more radioactive, and this doesn't even begin to address the proliferation dangers. We've been risking war with Iran over the uses of centrifuge enrichment to produce HALU over a decade, and the nonproliferation regime may not be able to withstand the hypocrisy of the U.S. building commercial HALU capacity. And as I said, HALU-irradiated fuel will be much more radioactive and complicated, and it's an unresolved problem already.
Thank you, Ms. Diarigo. I'm gonna say it wrong, Diarigo?
Ms. Diarigo and its Nuclear Information and Resource Service. You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay, Jan Budart, followed by Jean Nichols.
I'm Jan Budart, a member of the Nuclear Energy Information Service, but these comments are my own personal observations and not from any EIS. On Page 1 of the Reader's Guide to the Draft Environmental Impact Statement for DOE activities in support of commercial production of high assay, low-enriched uranium, the summary, it says, "The production of HALU under DOE's proposed action would require the following activities: The first of which is uranium mining and milling. But U-mining and milling is not one operation, but three operations, and two of these should be listed separately, mining and milling. The third operation, transportation, is later in the same list. In situ mining and recovery of U-oxide or yellowcake with transportation to Metropolis, Illinois, that's Superman's hometown on Earth, should have its own section in the EIS. The single listing of mining and milling obfuscates their separate containment, their separate contamination sites, the mine and the mill, and the contamination of the road in between. One example of several that could be cited is the Pinion Plain Mine near Grand Canyon in Arizona and the White Mesa Mill in Utah, 260 or 360 miles distant, depending on the route. Energy Fuels, a company based in Montreal, Canada, claims ownership of both sites. There are three possible routes that start at the mine and go north through the Hopi and Denai Nations. The trucks carrying radioactive ore are required to have only a tart cover. This means that the radioactive dust and stones probably will be spread along the interstate going through Indian lands. Children and families live there and cross the highway to get to destinations in their territory. The tribes have been able to forbid transportation on their local roads, but the interstate is beyond their control. What about the possibility of an accident on Interstate 160 and 191, which have long stretches through tribal lands? And this is just one example of two contaminating processes with a very likely contaminated transportation route in between. Nuclear Fuels has several examples of mining and milling sites. Mining and milling are two processes and should be evaluated separately. Therefore, I earnestly request that the DOE separate them and that the EIS treat each of them in environmental analysis and their transportation routes be subject to analysis, the same as any other process in the supply chain. Leach mining deserves its own section of the EIS, separate from pick-and-shovel mining. Thank you."
Thank you, Ms. Budart. Jean Nichols will be followed by John Sonnen. John Sonnen will be followed by Judith Beckman. Judith Beckman will be followed by Kailene Walker. Kailene Walker will be followed by Kathy Kailene Walker will be followed by Kathy Helms. Kathy Helms will be followed by Karen Bonheim. Karen Bonheim will be followed by Mark Falston. Mark Falston will be followed by Ishal Keegan. I believe it's Ishal. I'm not positive. Keegan, followed by Michaela Boucher.
Hello, Michael Keegan here.
Oh, good.
Can you hear me?
Oh, I'm just missing an M, but you're welcome to go ahead.
Thank you. Michael Keegan with Don't Waste Michigan. I'm in my 44th year of tracking the nuclear power industry. In February of 2015, I sat in on a stakeholder DOE-NRC meeting where the DOE was encouraging proposed new reactors with pursuing a higher level of enrichment fuel. 5% to 10% was five plus, then the 10% to 20% was the HALU and then reprocessing. But there would be no rulemaking on any of this. When I asked why no rulemaking, the DOE-NRC was, "Well, there just wasn't the interest at this time. It's a chicken and egg situation. We've got to have the fuel ready for when the small reactors get there." Clearly, the DOE pushing this type of fuel when the designs don't even exist. I have concerns that this is really a Trojan horse for proliferation. By virtue of having HALU enrichment at 20% U-235, virtually 85% to 90% of the cost and the labor to take it to weapons-grade has been committed and is embedded. At Centruson, Ohio, they spent $274 million to fulfill a demonstration project where they generated 44 pounds of HALU. That comes out to about $6.2 million per pound. The production is now halted. They cannot move to a production line of 900 kilograms of HALU because they do not have the canisters to hold the HALU. They do not have B5 canisters. A special room was built to prevent criticality when the HALU came out of production. There's no way to transportate, no transportation exists for this level of enrichment without risking a criticality accident. None of these pieces are in place and so there's no economic argument for HALU. This is proliferation. This is a military agenda and I beseeze you to move to a rulemaking process where there can be hearings, protracted hearings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keegan. I'm sorry that I mispronounced your name. Michaela Boucher, followed by Pat Marida. Pat Marida, followed by Patrick Hines. That's the end of the list of pre-registered commenters. I'm going to recall the people that haven't responded yet in case they joined us since we started. Bryn Hammerstrom. Jay Jones. Jean Nichols. John Sonnen. Judith Beckman. Kailene Walker. Kathy Helms. Mark Falston. Michaela Boucher. Pat Marida. Patrick Hines. I'd like to remind everyone that if you didn't pre-register to speak, it's not too late. We just need you to raise your hand using the hand function in Zoom to let us know you're interested. And if you already spoke during this session and would like to speak again, let us know by raising your hand and we'll call on you a second time. Hey, I see a hand up. Dan Solids. You need to unmute your... There we go. Go ahead, Mr. Solids.
All right. Good afternoon. Here in Eugene, Oregon, I'm representing myself. I tuned in too late for the presentation, but the Navy's been moving this stuff around for quite a while and it's stuff much more concentrated. So, I think it can be done. The question is, should it be done? And that really needs a whole different venue to probably political to decide that. I guess what concerns me most about this whole genre is the waste and dealing with the waste and transporting the waste. And the DOE would do a service to everybody if they would try to get more information out about how they plan to deal with and transport the waste. They really need to get together with communities that the waste is going through and the governors' associations and all that to kind of get those ducks in a row before start promoting different, more exotic fuels. So, anyway, I submit these comments for your and your audience's consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solids. The presentation slides that were shared earlier are available online and I'll ask the folks running the chat to post the link for that presentation for you if you'd like to go online and see those.
Yes, thank you.
I'm looking to see if any hands are going up. We are scheduled to go until 9:45 and we will be available until that time. So, we will be here. If you're interested in providing a comment, please raise your hand and let us know. We have a hand up. Joseph Damar would like to provide a comment. You can go ahead, Mr. Damar.
Yes, thank you, Joe Damar, co-chair of the Wood County Green Party of Ohio. I just wanted to mention that on page 1-13, Table 1.1-1, Nuclear Energy Institute Survey Results for Estimated HALU Demand Through 2035. They are estimating that there should have been 1.8 metric ton demand in 2022, 7.7 metric ton demand in 2023, 18 metric ton demand in 2024. For a cumulative total at this time, it should have been 27.5 metric tons. As I understand it, there are no reactors currently using HALU in the United States of America and so these estimates are all wrong. And the way they increase exponentially after that, going up to 700 metric tons by 2030, would also be wrong. So, this, once again, suggests that the target that the DOE has established for creating HALU is wildly overestimated. And as I pointed out in the last hour, the production of HALU, since HALU itself is a dangerous substance, both chemically and radioactively, the protection of the public demands that you don't create more of it than you need. And so, there has to be a process for attenuating production. You can... I disagree with the need to have HALU. As I've stated before, renewables are rapidly replacing nuclear energy around the world. And by 2030, according to current projections, renewables will be so cheap and so abundant, as will storage of various technologies, that no one will want to be building these HALU nuclear reactors. But if you're going to insist on creating the potential or the capacity to create it, you don't also need to stockpile hundreds of metric tons of toxic radioactive fuel, which will never be used. So, there's a difference between creating the capacity to make it and then actually creating it and storing it. And again, even if it's never used, it will have to be isolated from the environment for hundreds of thousands of years. So, that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Damar. We will go back into recess until a hand goes up. We will go back into recess until a hand goes up? So am I allowed? Okay. Dan Solitz has his hand up. Mr. Solitz, you can go ahead. There we go.
Okay, thank you. Don't want to be a pest, but I really like this format. It gives me time to think. Is it possible to post a link to the comments for the scoping of this EIS?
We're not taking questions tonight, but I believe they're included in the draft EIS.
Oh, they are? Okay.
Yeah. I hope I'm correct.
Thank you.
So if you go to the link for the draft EIS.
Alrighty.
And the project website is on the slide that has... No, it's in the chat. We sent that to you already, right?
Oh, yes, yes. I saw that there were numerous comments for the scoping and I was hoping for a link. But I'll download the EIS.
Okay.
Thank you.
Did you want to say anything else?
Well, just again, we have nuclear waste. It has to go somewhere. It can't stay where it's at. I mean, for 50 or 100 years maybe, but eventually it has to end up somewhere. So integral to all of these discussions on the nucleonics by the DOE has evolved. There needs to be some... And I know you're working on it, but there needs to be more letting the public in on it so that there'll be more accepting moving this stuff across the country. Because there's a lot of places where it's at now, but it just really is not good for, safe for. I'm thinking of the waste up on the Columbia River, the Hanford Reservation. We'd really like to get that away from the Columbia, and there's geologically better spots for it. And there was one that was just volunteered, I think it was for interim storage, Rumsfeld or something like that in California. And immediately, people just jumped on the transportation issue, as well as the storage issue. So a lot of work ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Solitz. Okay, we'll go on to recess again. If you're interested. I... Am I live? Okay. Someone named Kathy Helms has put a chat message in. It says her mic isn't working, and she wants to make a comment. So I'm going to read her comment so it goes into the record. "The mic on my computer isn't working, but it was referenced previously in regard to basically putting the cart before the horse." Here is a post from the American Nuclear Society about a meeting tomorrow, April 4th, "to identify codes and standards..." I'm going to figure out how to scroll down. "...codes and standards to deploy advanced reactors." "Officials from entities including the American Nuclear Society are set to attend." In quotes, "The goal of our collaboration is to proactively identify codes and standards applicable to an array of non-traditional reactor designs." NRC Chair Christopher Hansen says, "This effort will make the NRC's licensing and oversight of these technologies timelier and more efficient." And she says, "The full story is available on Nuclear Newswire, which is a publication of the American Nuclear Society, on March 25th," I believe is what that says. So... I did? Okay. To identify... NRC INL plant... Do you want me to start all the way over at the top? Okay. The mic on my computer isn't working, but as was referenced previously in regard to basically putting the cart before the horse. Here is a post from the American Nuclear Society about a meeting tomorrow, April 4th, "to identify codes and standards for non-traditional reactor designs." NRC, comma, INL, plan event on advanced reactor codes and standards. "The Nuclear Regulatory Commission and Idaho National Laboratory have scheduled an event for April 4th that will focus on leveraging consensus codes and standards to deploy advanced reactors." "Officials from entities including the American Nuclear Society are set to attend." "The goal of our collaboration is to proactively identify codes and standards applicable to an array of non-traditional reactor designs." "NRC Chair Christopher Hansen says, 'This effort will help make the NRC's licensing and oversight of these technologies more timelier and more efficient.'" So that's the end of the comment. Oh, I gotta change my view then. So Joseph Damar's hand is up again?
Yes, thank you. Part of what this environmental impact statement does is it describes in-situ mining processes and other processes that are involved in the milling, mining, and production of the HALU. I want to refer back to my comments during the first hour. The Department of Energy claims in the summary that these processes have been done safely for many generations. And as I... For many years. And as I listed in the first hour, there are many, many examples of the fact that it has not been done safely, that it has, in fact, resulted in severe contamination in many different places around the country. What I suggest, what I'm asking for in the final environmental impact statement, in fact, is an accounting. In fact, if we list all the places in the United States where the process is needed to make HALU have been done, and list how many of them have had contamination of various sorts and various levels. Because we need, in order to correctly assess the environmental impact of the proposed HALU fuels, we need to look at the actual impact of the fuels that have been made so far. Fuels which have, since they are lower in U235, are less dangerous. We're talking about making a fuel which is much more dangerous and much more unstable. And yet, the Department of Energy simply claims it has made the lower assay fuels safely in the past. But I believe that if the DOE were to include a comprehensive history of the spills and contaminations that have happened around the country, it would become clear that that statement is false. And therefore, in determining whether or not to create a new fuel cycle, according to DEPA, you would have to have a correct assessment of the risks involved. And those risks are high enough, I believe. And once, if the history is included, it will clearly show that the no-action alternative is better in terms of protecting the United States of America and its citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Damar. So we'll go back into recess until we see a hand go up? Hey, um, we have a hand up? Michelle Lee?
Yes, I'm back. Um, I will now repeat comments I made in the earlier session, but, but I'll add to it with one point. Um, there isn't really a discussion of uncertainties in the report. Uh, and that is a very essential element um, that is needed to inform the public, particularly with respect to security threats. And I'm well aware that one cannot go into detail uh, or necessarily quantify the risks, since they are, the risks are by nature uncertain. Uh, but we have had enough evidence in the current century of surprise incidents waged by both foreign and domestic malevolent actors. Uh, you have a whole array of emerging technologies, AI being one of them, uh, as well as developing weapon systems, drone swarms, and many other um, technologies that are very likely to pose a considerable threat if they were waged by a knowledgeable actor. Uh, the cost of such risk uh, extends way beyond what the actual release of radioactivity to a major disruption of the economy and potential initiation of US becoming involved in a, another war. Um, so again, the evolving threats, while they cannot be quantified and they cannot be discussed in great detail, should be identified, at least as a list. Uh, and that's absolutely necessary if you're going to retain your, your professed mission of informing the public. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. So, um, we're still here until 9:45. So if you have something you'd like to say, please raise your hand and we'll go back, um, live. Thank you.
I'd like to speak. I'm on the phone.
Oh, hey. Hmm, we have someone that would like to speak. Can you please give us your name before you speak?
Yes, it's Sarah Fields. I'm with Uranium Watch in Moab, Utah, uh, which addresses uranium mining and milling issues.
Okay, go ahead.
So, look, looking at your draft environmental impact statement and a section 2.1.1 uranium mining and milling, kind of an introduction, you have a map of HALU mining and milling overview. So you have a map of Utah, and there is Garfield County where you have a milling facility, at least on the map. Well, the main milling facility is not in Garfield County. It's next door in Salem County. They have a old uranium mill in Garfield County which hasn't operated since 1982. So that's wrong on the map. Um, over in New Mexico, you show an ISL operation in McKinley County. There is no operating ISL operation, um, uranium recovery operation in New Mexico. Looking at Arizona, it shows conventional mining over, um, the, um, northwest corner of Arizona. There is no uranium mining in Moh, this is Mojave County. There's no uranium mining in Mojave County. And what you're missing is uranium mining in the northeast corner of Arizona, where uranium mining is taking place, um, close to the south rim of the Grand Canyon, um, in national forest land. Um, so you have that. And you have other indications of in situ uranium recovery operations in, in other states, but I, I don't have enough information to comment on that. And then further down, you have some information on the environmental impacts. Where in your discussion, you just say that, um, the impacts from conventional uranium mining and milling is small, so you're not really even going to look at that. And the only possibility of a, a large impact would be if there were new tailings impoundments at the White Mesa Mill. And you don't mention at all that that would require, um, a license amendment and it would destroy, um, archi, significant archaeological resources, including pit houses and kivas. Uh, the whole of White Mesa is, um...
And you can conclude your remarks. That's three minutes.
Yeah, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, if you want to provide another comment, please use star nine to let us know that you would like to provide a comment on your phone.
Thank you.
So we will go offline again. It's, um, 9:18 and we're scheduled to be here till 9:45. Um, Michael Keegan has raised his hand. Michael, if you'd like to speak again.
Yes, can you hear me? Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Michael Keegan with Don't Waste Michigan. Uh, about a month ago, I sat in on a meeting, a DOE, NRC meeting, um, and they were discussing HALU. And they were nearly giddy about the $500 million they'd gotten in dispense to do experiments. Nearly a thousand experiments that went on and on and on. But they didn't say what the experiments were. And all the documents are secret. And it's an asymmetrical battle to even know what you're up to. So we're left to deduce. About 50 years ago, Harvard conducted a colloquium on security and what would a plutonium economy look like? Yeah, I think there were 50 colloquies. A third of them were security. A third of them were physicist types, nuclear engineers. A third of them were policymakers. Legal. And they concluded, if you're going to have a plutonium economy, you're going to have a police state. Your civil liberties are going to be tremendously hampered because of security. And here, we're traveling along a parallel path with the HALU. Well, gonna use it here, gonna use it there, gonna use it in us, Australia, submarines, micro. It's dual purpose. And it's proliferation prone by its very existence. And that very question is getting ducked and politely being dealt with with firewalls that are of paper, and paper burns. What is needed is a programmatic environmental impact statement. As I'm listing through the commenters, I can see there's a multitude of facilities that are involved, will be involved in the HALU. And this is going to be the, the fuel of the future. New reactors going forward. And yet there has been no rule making. The economics of it are bankrupt. Nuclear power coming in at four to five times the cost of wind and solar. And you can get the wind and solar in a year or two. The opportunity cost by going down the avenue of HALU is extraordinary. So cease and desist. Stop digging the hole. Stop digging it deeper. Stop your HALU project.
Thank you, Mr. Keegan. So if you would like to provide comments, please put your hand up in the Zoom. We will recess again. Um, we have about 20 more minutes that we're available to take comments in this session. Okay, I just want to give you a 15-minute warning. So we've got 15 more minutes in this session. If you want to make a comment, please raise your hand. We're here. Okay. Joe Damar, again?
Yes. Table 2.6-1. The draft EIS claims that for all HALU activities, overall, the potential for environmental consequences are small. This conclusion was reached without any kind of supporting information, as far as I can tell. And one of the things that the Department of Energy needs to take into account is the impact of past experiences, past fuel enrichment practices, particularly in places like Piketon, where recently they just had to close an entire school building because of contamination from fuel enriching activities years before. This, the full impact of past activities aren't known. They're still unfolding and they're getting more and more serious as time goes on in terms of loss of property, in terms of loss of health, in terms of loss of genetic health. And so to simply make the assertion with no support that potential environmental consequences are small is wrong. Potential environmental consequences. For example, if centrifuges explode and send highly irradiated fuel and which is both chemically and radioactively toxic out into the environment, those consequences could be huge. Cleanup could cost millions or billions of dollars. These substances remain toxic for hundreds of thousands of years. If you're looking at the potential environmental impact, you have to think about the worst-case scenario. As far as I can tell, all scenarios in this report, in this draft environmental statement, are best-case scenarios. For example, when you talk about storing the fuel, you describe creating a cinder block building and you mentioned maybe you should have some security around that building. But you, no discussion of the possibility of malicious actors that might try to attack it, requiring extensive security and fortifications, barbed wire, moats, machine gun emplacements. We are living in dangerous times that are becoming more and more dangerous. This is not the time to be using rosy best-case scenarios for your potential dangers. So this draft environmental impact statement fails spectacularly in looking at potential dangers in the future. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Damar. We are here. If anyone would like to provide comments, please raise your hand. We have officially reached the end of this public hearing. On behalf of the U.S. Department of Energy, I would like to thank you for your participation in this public comment process for HALU, for the HALU environmental impact statement. I would like to emphasize that DOE will continue accepting comments via email and mail until April 22, 2024. As a reminder, written comments should be sent to Mr. James Lovejoy, who is DOE's EIS Document Manager. They can be sent to U.S. Department of Energy Idaho Operations Office, located at 1955 Fremont Avenue, Mail Stop 1235 in Idaho Falls, Idaho, 83415. Or if you prefer, by email to HALU spelled H-A-L-E-U hyphen E-I-S at nuclear.energy.gov. Those same addresses may also be used to request to be added to the mailing list for project notifications. For more information, including the hearings, presentation slides that we used tonight, will be available on the project website at Let the record reflect that it is now 9:46 and we will adjourn this hearing. Thank you so much for participating tonight.